We saw it.
I need to have my doodle in here too. I'll see copies. Yeah, I think so. All the Christmas trees and the Randy.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today to do the county's business and ask that you guide us in the decisions that we make. Ask that you be with all those across the country who are feeling the turmoil that's been going on lately and ask you to soften hearts and just bring the love into the equation and forgiveness and a good thought process instead of just violence or disagreeable. Allow people to come together to discuss things. Ask that you be with those that protect us and those that protect others around the world and the country. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, the president of the state, Texas. One state under your God.
All right, this time in person with business before the court that's scheduled on the agenda. We speak to the court when formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each period will be limited to three minutes. Bye the weekend, morning everybody, thanks for being here. All right, we'll move on to presentation and discussion of department head committee board reports. Let's see anything that needs to be discussed, anything that stands out. Good reports, best stuff going on. Anybody, any of the department heads want to speak to anything they have going on? We'll move on to approval of previous court minutes.
I couldn't find a single one.
I can mostly refer to this for this court.
All in favor? Accepting of donations to county entities. The library had lots of donations, senior center had donations.
Our book sale is going to be massive.
Yeah.
Yeah, the storage container is completely full.
Oh my goodness, okay.
So, everybody get ready to combust some books.
My promotion may approve. Donations to the library has proven.
Senior Center also had.
Senior Center, yeah.
That's twenty, twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred.
And the senior.
In precinct projects, scheduling statue. I missed that one a minute ago.
I'm going to the lumberyard to get the stencils and paint. The city's in need of one of those strapping machines.
Good.
And I will pick up any, try to just have it shut down one day, it's done two.
I don't know if Matt has stencils. Didn't have you.
Todd might have one. I'll check with him.
I was thinking Matt might too, either one of them might.
So I talked to Matt, he had nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Strapping machine belongs to the city.
Yeah, okay.
That's my project room.
Okay. Todd's truck, just so you all know, Todd's truck transmission went out. As you know, we are replacing that this coming year. So Doug picked up that he's going to allow them, allow them to use to get through the end of the year. Transmission's $5,000, truck's not worth that, so instead of paying $5,000 for a truck that's not worth it, do something different for now. Just wanted to make you all aware of that. Okay, new thing on the agenda, did y'all have anything else under projects? Employee of the month, we've been talking about this.
Can we, she's on her way, can we?
Oh, we can wait that though. Yeah, no wait just a minute. Court consider home delivered meal grant program. We do this one every year.
Every year.
Not a lot of money, but it's some money.
Yes.
How much do you actually?
It goes between 12 and 15,000 a year.
How much do you spend on that program?
Pardon?
How much do you actually spend on the program?
Well, it's just our home delivered meal program and then this just kind of fills in where Title 19 and Title 20 don't pay. Like this kind of helps with that. And it's through the Department of Texas Department of Agriculture for the Texans leading Texans grant.
My promotion may approve the home delivered meal grant program.
Sorry, all in favor? Court consider county employee family leave program. I'm not going to get into the city stuff right now because I want to get to Jennifer, I don't know if she's going to. Let's talk about the county employee leave pool program. Currently, we have transferring them sick leave is what it's called under the policy. We're under certain conditions to be approved by the supervisor and employee or employees may contribute long-term illness stays to another employee, including employee of their choice after 40 hours. And then it gets into the detail on that. This is the legislature, and I'm going to let Misty talk about this because she knows both of that.
The legislature actually tells us exactly what is allowed and how to put the leave pool together. And we will follow it as it is stated, and that's what will be in our personnel policy. I have made applications and in the legislature in the House bill, it says that Dan is the overseer. So basically, I will get with Dan for applications and everything. And he will have to appoint if he chooses my office to maintain it.
I so choose.
If you choose.
I so choose.
Oh, you so choose. To maintain it. And this, we have where we can currently donate. And the donations work, but say if something happens in the EMS office and someone in another office has a lot of hours, they don't always know what is going on and if someone needs it. This just kind of builds that gap where we don't have it anymore. And so if something happens to one employee, then in the pool, we can just pull from it as everyone is able to.
Hold on, I told you.
It does look like that's going to have to be an agenda item that the court appoints the. If you're not going to do it, then the court has to appoint it according to the statute.
You were a little quick.
Let somebody else have that.
How do, does it describe how people donate to this? Or how would I know?
We're going to send a, you have to have at least, as you're, as the employee, you'll have to maintain hour, 80 hours. Anything above, you're able to donate.
And you can just donate as you feel.
As you feel.
My promotion may approve the family leave pool program legislation as presented.
And the terminology in here is pretty plainly written for legislation. So it's pretty easy to understand how the, how you can contribute and all of that. So most legislation isn't written as plain as this, so.
That's pretty easy.
Yes, it is. That one is actually simple to read compared to, it's HB 334.
And I can forward this to all of you, one copy of the legislation. All right, all in favor? Says if county is established for county, or if a program is established for county under this section, the county judge, county shall serve as pool administrator or appoint an individual to service pool administrator.
I think you read that before and read it in your recording.
Yes, I knew that. This court consider sharing cost of ICMA video production cost with cities matter, and that's why I was asking that question.
Oh, okay, sorry. I had somebody come in my office and then I had a phone call, so I didn't get to get back to you.
All right, so Eli, you want to tell us, tell us about this? It's the International Association of City Managers, International City Managers Association. We'll, we'll, hang on just a minute, we'll come back. Jenna just walked in.
The star on the show.
The star of the show today. We started doing employee of the month, the court approved that. We finally were able to start getting together to have, to look at those. And it, the committee is the committee that is salary agreements committee, basically. And so we had some nominations, we went over those nominations. And based on several factors, Jenna Quick is going to be the August employee of the month. Jenna originally worked with the sheriff's office from eight, 2012 to 11, 2018, and then returned in January of 2020. She works extremely hard as a dispatcher, training new employees, completing open records requests, and ensuring that all of our entries for warrants and stolen items are accurate and up to date. So she does a little bit.
Just a few things.
It sounds a bit like a lot to me. What's, what's going to happen is Jenna will get this certificate. And it says that the certificate is proudly presented to Jenna Quick. We appreciate you for more than just your work. We also want to celebrate your character and the positive effect you have on others. And I did not sign it yet, Misty did not sign it yet.
Misty might not have signed it, but of course you do.
But what will happen is Jenna gets her certificate, we'll put one downstairs so that anybody that's going to see can see who the employee of the month is and.
I didn't know she was getting it, so I left and then I.
Well, come right here, we're all for it.
No, no pressure.
Smile. That's my smile, Hannah.
Hey, wait a minute.
Okay, now we got to put you on the podium.
So Jenna gets an extra day off that she can use when she likes. We'll post this on Facebook, on our website, we'll have a spot where it's employee of the month. Just a little bit of notoriety for all of the work that you do for it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Yes, sir, thank you. That's exciting, I'm glad we started doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll go back to, it's court consider sharing cost of ICMA video production cost with cities matter. So going to. Oh, good golly, where we went to Denver.
Denver, All-American City.
All-American City has, I don't want to say repercussions because that makes it sound bad, has a ripple effect. So we were noticed by the International City Managers Association and they won Spotlight Snyder as one of 25 cities, correct?
Correct, at their annual conference, which is going to be in Tampa Bay, so. And what it is, is we have to pay for the productions. They'll play it at the conference and they also play it on their, on their website. And then they'll publish it and put it out on YouTube so anybody can see it. It's, it's, it's a good recognition for this, for the county and the city.
Another way that possibly we can draw more attention here, get the spotlight put on us even more. So we're looking at dividing the cost. What's the?
Still got to visit. Visit would see you other than the time or so.
What's, what's the total cost?
Total cost is 26,300.
So if we did up to half, it'd be about 13.
Right.
If it was, listen, that'd be about 7,500. Do you?
We do not have that in that fund, we have like 4,500 in that fund left.
Okay, is there another area contingencies or anything like that?
I would have to look, I just happened, I looked at that one to see, because that's one you had emailed about.
Right.
I had looked at it before, I had people come in.
Yeah.
I don't, I have to look at the other ones and I can't sign into my.
Sure.
Your P because it's a new fund and I don't have my, my password set. No, I already set my password. I'll have to look and then get back with you. But I know that fund 16 only has about 45, 25 or something like that that's left in there.
Okay.
In the fund balance of that line.
Okay.
I don't know about any of the other ones.
I can go work and.
When do they need an answer?
About the end of next week.
Guess we should come back next week and just, are we going to need to have a meeting for?
I think we're, what is it, isn't it three weeks to the next court?
I think so.
So we will need to have another one at some, before the three weeks, just because payables.
Yeah.
So.
Good, we'll come back next week and have a definite answer on the source of the funds. We do have those somewhere that we can do that. That is, I think, I think that's pretty amazing that out of the whole country, they're spotlighting 25 Snyder as one of them. And I think that's a huge opportunity to get our name out there, so. Okay, let's go ahead and go on down to number 20 since Eli. Court to discuss and consider chip seal for city of Snyder. For road and industrial park pursuit into the city county interlocal agreement and source of funds for the project. So this is project doing the, about a mile of road out there, I think. And it started with ROE coming out there, but not just for ROE, it's for the industrial park. Dcos and city of Snyder had an agreement to do the road and they asked us to come in and do the chip sailing for it. Terry, I wish he was here for this, but he agreed, yes, we could do that. The issue came to be where, where the funds are going to come from on that, paying for the rock and the oil. Eli, do you have any more information on that?
From, from the total project, county does it, I mean, I just kind of put a rough number together. We're looking about 7,500. And that's a high number.
Do you say one mile?
Yeah, the, the thing with that, it's a prime and a double, of course, yellow coat.
Okay.
And the, the road is 36 foot wide. It's actually 40. We're cutting it down to 36.
I've been on it. I did a good job. So where are we going to pay for it?
That is a question. Could out of precincts, I really would rather not go to Board's 29 anymore. I don't, I don't know that it would be there right now.
It's getting there for pretty hard.
Do you have any other thoughts or enjoy any thought? Where the funds could come from? 75? I believe Terry was, I don't want to speak for him, but he was talking in a way that in our last meeting, I'm glad he did that. So I'm not totally speaking for him. He was suggesting that, yeah, we should pay towards it. So what are your thoughts on splitting it between the precincts?
I think.
Okay.
Other options? What's in the Road and Bridge?
I don't know. I cannot get signed into my account on my phone. Do you have 16 on there?
I don't. Say you would get it. Or is it a motivating move?
I hate to keep kicking things down, brother.
And there's more than one place that I would have to look at anyways because you have the fund balance, you have the cash balance, and then you have the separate precinct Texas class balances. So you have all of that. Because you got the precinct four, you have the precinct one, then you have the road and bridge, all Texas class. Then you have the cash balance, which is the bank, which we did have to do a transfer from Road and Bridge, Texas class, to cover some, like, basic payables, which we hadn't had to do up until two weeks ago.
Yeah.
For this year. Yeah. Yeah, because of the amount of payroll. I don't know if you have funds 16, 15.
I don't believe I do.
Well, if we don't know, I mean, I agree with you. We take the chickens up down the road to the 14th. Look. Let's. Some valves.
It's only 626. We don't have no one said it.
Well, I agree with that. We need to do it. Our local agreement, and we've been, what, six years since we, five years since we've silcoated in the city? And there've been several reasons behind that that we really couldn't control. But that's part of the interlocal agreement and I feel like we need to do it.
But was the interlocal agreement we paid for everything?
No.
But there have been a lot of times where we've had things come up and the city has stepped up and helped out. It is not in the local agreement to pay for things.
Well, I understand that, but I didn't budget for that.
So you know, it doesn't miss you, Eli.
We, we'd like to have it done this year. I'd say that 70, 70, 75,000 is a high number. I mean, if they come down to it, we're willing to split the cost. We have to, you know, 30, 35,000, maybe 40, yeah. We, we lay that base and I'd like to go ahead and get it.
You need to for brains to get rid of it again. But this can get checked right now.
We'll downstairs and, and sign in and check on my computer downstairs.
Can you mind doing that? I'll come back to that in a few minutes. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, we'll come back to that in a few minutes. All right, Court, Considerers, County Appraisal District Board nomination. If you had a name.
Yes, I spoke with Tyson Price and he would like to be nominated or, you know, be on the.
Okay. Terry, when he said he wasn't going to be here, he, he asked me to put Jason French out there as a nomination. I don't know either one. I'm leaning heavily on that.
I prefer Jason French myself. That's just me.
Know either one?
I know Tyson.
You don't tell your son at all.
You said I don't know either one of them. I'm going to follow up.
Well, I know, I know both of them. I mean, both good guys, both businessmen here in Curry County. Like I said, I reached out to folk with the passing, my motion is to nominate Tyson Price.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll say. Okay, all in favor of Tyson Price's nomination for this Curry County Appraisal District Board nomination? All opposed? And I'm going to stay on this one because I don't know either one.
Okay, so we have two for, one against, and one under. Okay. So let Kerry.
All right, Court Consider Historic Jail. So I thought I brought this to court and I guess I missed it. So the, the winner of the bid decided not to purchase the jail. So Historical Commission said that they are willing to take it up as a project to look at doing something with it down the road. Depending on where the vote goes in November for the, for the courthouse. They are getting funds and if those funds, if the courthouse is voted no, if voted no on the courthouse, they would want to use those funds with the historic jail. I think the two bids were 45,000 and 5,000 for the jail. There was a lot of public outcry, why are we selling our history when we put it up for bid? So looking for guidance on where you want to go with the historic jail.
It was, I know we talked about it. Historical landmark, so to speak. Got the plaque and everything and. It fell through. Keep it for a while. Next bidder.
Ms. Hammer?
That was my question, since the county attorney's here, should the next person not win it?
No, there's no provision in the law that allows you to go, the next bidder can't really bid it, unfortunately. You would think, it makes too much sense just to say first bidder fell out. There are some things architects, engineers, you can do that with, but not when you sell property, unfortunately.
Does court have to approve a bid, say get a bid of like, say I bid 10 bucks? You have to approve it?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're.
Okay. I just make it sure because I.
So you won it?
They also have the ability to set a base bid as well. So you, you could bid it with the base being, as an example, 5,000 or 10,000, if you wanted to.
So the purpose of bidding it out and selling it was to get it off, to let somebody else pay the taxes on it. So we're right back where we started from as far as the count. I mean, it's historical, I understand, but the purpose of selling it was getting it where somebody else would pay property taxes on it. And that's kind of falling through.
And that it would be restored, that it would have a meaning instead of just sitting there rotting?
Not 100% sure on that, so.
Well, they had plans to put in some kind of cigar lounge, as I understood, so.
It doesn't matter to me as long as it's somebody else paying property tax.
Yeah, exactly, and I understand.
So we want to think about this for a little bit before we make a decision on it? Look at some options, bring it back to the table?
I think so.
You want to rebid it? There's something else?
You can rebid it. Because we had two bids last time. You know, one of them's going to be out. If nobody bids, only one over to do with it. It is a historical marker.
But something will get done with it. It's going to rot.
It is, it is.
Chad, you're on the Historical Commission. Do you want to speak to that? From there, for change of.
Change my hats. We really are interested in the jail. It's one of our projects, you know, as of right now, we're trying to start this courthouse thing, see where it goes. But we really, I know me and Melissa Rico have talked long ways of like, we would love for by next year, when the Smithsonian comes in and we have the museum on Main Street that's coming, to at least be able to walk through it and be able to have people walk through it and see it. Now, that is going to be a feat. If you've been in there, it's, it's pretty bad. Second, third level aren't too bad, but you're still lip paint everywhere. You're still watching where you're walking, but it's not as bad as the first floor. Like I said, we're, we're very interested in taking it on and making it something. There's been discussions of whether it's like a gallery, a art museum kind of thing, or a partnership with the museum to put in some stuff down there so people can go and view it. Maybe a boardroom of some sort that people could rent. It would be, be profitable and it wouldn't be just left in squalor. Because it is a nice building and it is history and it is really cool to have, but, you know. I was about to say something my dad was going to say, but hell, coming back, I'm sorry. It involves wishing in one hand, if you get what I mean, but, you know. And it would be nice, I wish, you know, a lot of people don't understand grants and how they work and, you know, they're for certain things and for certain things only. And, you know, I wish there was some rich millionaire that has a grant just for old Texas jails. I would totally write that grant, but there's none. But there is some that umbrella that, that we're looking into. And one of them's out of Abilene, so it, you know, is kind of local, you know, area. So, but we, we really are interested in seeing what we can do to take care of it. And also I pointed out to the board last time we met was, when did Drew get sick?
When did who?
Drew.
Always been two years, three years.
Yeah, so the Historical Commission really kind of faltered when Drew got sick. And we've just now got new faces, new members, new bodies to start doing stuff like this. And so we're, we've hit the ground running and we're still running, but it is going to take a little bit of time for us to get our bearings and figure out where our niche is, where we can find money and where the Historical Commission. And, you know, we're learning stuff every day.
Issue of selling it is you'd have to put in the provision that it remain historical.
Does it, I believe because of the landmark, it has to.
Right. And if I find a mistake and that was discussed last.
Yeah.
Their exterior has to say the same, interior can change.
And that, that follows historical, the state Historical Commission guidelines, that the exterior looks the exterior. And if the Historical Commission were to do anything with it, I think, I don't know if we, the county would retain ownership or they would take ownership or that would have to be something that we would have to dig into further, yeah, legalize and other ways.
Your entity doesn't own any real property right now.
No, we do not, I don't believe.
So y'all have to go after, get a grant of some sort to redo it, correct?
Yes, sir. We would just, y'all would remain owners, but we would help facilitate kind of the upkeep and the process of, you know, making it something that citizens can use and people can stop by and see and, you know. It'd be really neat to have it open during Buffalo days and, you know, especially at Halloween time. People pay a ticket to go get scared in that place. You just got to fight the homeless off with a stick or something. That's my only drawback is I don't know how secure it is. I know there's been an uptick in the homeless. And I just don't want it to get worse than it is. But it is on our radar, like I said, but right now courthouse is taking up a lot of our time trying to get that information out and make sure people know all about it.
Well, if man says we should go out for bids or we retain ownership of it until we find out if the courthouse bill passes and we can.
Yeah. It's, it's one of those, I, I like our historic buildings. I hate to lose our historic buildings and I would hate to, if we were to sell it, they're going, change it into whatever, of course, it would look historic, but I agree. Bring, old jails bring people to town, you know. Courthouse has bring people to town, you know, older buildings bring people to town. So I personally would like to let the Historical Commission see what they can do over the next few years. I know there was a, a push in the 90s to do something with it. It felt rude, but you have a different group of people, a different mentality and I'd like to see where they would go with it.
Can't wait. November's not far off.
And it's been there for 110 years, so it's not going anywhere right now.
I would like to see what happens in November and bring it back. So maybe what happens, like that's my problem. I agree.
And post that, you know, we, I'm sure there's a group of us that'd be happy to come and talk to y'all and maybe kind of draw out what we think would be a good idea to be in the jail, you know. We could come and talk to commissioners. We'd love to. Much I'll know, hey, this is our plan of action. This is what we're hoping for. This is how we're going to do it.
I mean, let, let Mal fall asleep, what happens in February?
Come back January or February. All right?
Because that other bid that y'all did receive was from someone who just kind of randomly came through town and looked at a bunch of old buildings and they are, I can't remember their name. their name.
The ghost.
Ghost hunter people, and yeah, when I heard five thousand dollars, I was like, they're gonna make it into some kind of, come get scared with us, this kinda thing, and I'm, mm-mm.
That was, looks weird, isn't it, in my opinion?
All right, we'll go back to, thank you Chad for the info.
You're welcome.
We'll go back to the chip seal.
Okay, for Roto Ridge in their bank line, which is the cash line at WTSB, uh, there's two million, five hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. That is also for all the operating and expenses through the rest of this year, payroll, operating, everything. Texas Pool, there is fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents. Texas Class, hundred and one thousand, three hundred and ten ninety-two, that's just the Roto Bridge ones, then Texas Class Precinct One, three million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, seven seventy-three sixty-four, Texas Class Precinct Four, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight thirty-six eighty-seven.
We're gonna wait for sleep, more than four people. Sorry.
Can always be span on the rose that they brought it in for, just remember that.
Yeah, but you're rotten.
So you think, how much do you say, how much do you pay out of it?
It's eighteen, seven fifty each precinct. If you did seventy-five thousand. If it's at seventy-five thousand, it's eighteen thousand, seven fifty each precinct.
Oh, eighteen thousand, well. I can come up with it if I have to. I'll break right to him, so I'll look. I can come up with my part.
If there was a precinct of two that weren't able to come up with their share of it, where would you wanna do it, to the remainder?
We'll call it their own line, uh, if not relearned.
Fund balance?
Yes.
Operate?
It would be out of their fund balance for fifteen, it can't cut, uh, the funds, that's Roto Bridge.
So what would y'all like to do then?
I'll make the motion that the, uh, each precinct, uh, through the quarter, uh, in any unfunded amount come from fifteen.
Derek's saying?
Terry's not here, though, falls is, would be, would take, oh, oh, we can't decide for him, can't we? I mean.
No, we can't.
Or if the court decides.
Yeah, and I did ask him, uh, he hadn't answered yet, but it's like Jeff said, if there's a precinct or two they can't, then we would take it from the fund balance, and, he's been asked, and if he gets an answer, then we'll know if his part can come out of there, if not, then we can take it out of the fund balance. All right, so we have a motion, can I say in public favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know when we'd be ready?
Whenever y'all are ready.
July, next year.
Just need a week's notice, we can put a finish on it, and we'll be ready.
Are y'all in the middle of?
So. I'll be with him, and, um, we'll perform, and let them get together, see what they can, what they can do, and get with Eli, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Court, consider Hermit Water sent to a sign. So what's going on right now with Correx and Hermit Water and PUC, Public Utility Commission? They have two applications before the Public Utility Commission, one is to purchase Hermit Water, and that is scheduled to be finished finally in December, however, they are also being sold. So, they have been told that they can't do both at the same time, one needs to take precedence over the other. The selling of Correx, by the way I understand it, needs to move before the selling of Hermit Water. Uh, it would create a bigger mess if they sold Hermit Water first, and then sold Correx to this company, so they are requesting, signed by utilities of Texas, Correx, the Delaware Corporation, to Texas Water Utilities LP. Basically, they want to sell. The assignment, in assumption of the agreement, by a signer to assign in accordance with the terms of the assignment, so. Basically, it would go to Water Utilities LP instead of Correx, and it would push it, it still pushes it back, but it doesn't push it back as far, it pushes it back to March, so, do we move on to?
Two. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does bid still stand at what it listed?
Yeah, I would think so, because we've sold it to Correx, but Correx is becoming a comp, a part of this other company before it's sold to Correx, so their merger will happen first, so there won't be a Correx, it'll be this Texas Water Utilities.
Okay, and then, does the Texas Utility Commission have to go through that whole process all over again?
No, it just pushes the timeline.
Okay, it's my understanding.
They would take it subject to a buy-sell agreement.
Okay.
So the agreement would stay in place, whatever the agreement said, and I haven't looked at in a while, we have a Correx, they would take it, basically the assignment would carry that agreement to whatever the new name is.
Yeah, Texas Limited Corporation.
And they would take it with all the assets and liabilities, and that buy-sell agreement would be a part of that transfer.
So they couldn't get out of it?
Well, they can always just come in and, or Correx can come in and just say, we default, and then we have to hook it up with legal remedies, but no, I, I think part of the reason for this is so they can effectuate the sale and get PUC to approve it quicker, is my understanding.
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about it from a legal standpoint, I don't think we're any worse or better positioned than we are as we sit right now.
Pushing it back five rooms.
And we knew PUC was gonna be an issue when we sold it way back when, we didn't think it was gonna be this much of an issue, but we knew that they were backlog.
We could go this far from information I've been hearing, and I have a motion to Hermit Water, just consent to that, that's my, is bruising it.
Okay. I'll appear. Uh, Court, consider, consider county what game room it is.
Judge, I didn't look at the agenda, did y'all include, did you include the proposed ordinance, ordinance in the packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've got it up on the board, there's.
There he is, since his tray's messed.
I think we've got it, Deputy Cuarto has done an excellent job, she basically built it, and then she's been back and forth with Mike on getting it refined, and this is where we've landed at on this version, uh, what we can legally implement, uh, to have one in place, but to keep us, you know, protected from liability or anything like that, I think we need something in place, I feel like, so I think this is gonna be the best version to push out and look at for y'all to adopt.
I do, do have a couple of points I wanna make, just for the record, counties can't regulate game rooms to the extent that cities can, so all this noise that you hear about, we can get rid of them, we can outlaw them, et cetera, not able to do that, cities have a lot broader discretion on what to do and how far to go, county statutes are fairly specific on what we can do, and are very limited, we've looked at game room ordinances from counties and cities all over the state, add knowledge in for the last two months, tried to look at what we think is legal, but also accomplishes the goals that you guys and the sheriff, I think, want to accomplish, um, and so we've come up with this ordinance that essentially makes them file an application, get stickers for their machines, allows the inspector, who would be, I think, a sheriff's office employee, go in to inspect, et cetera, it's all in there, I do wanna point out two things that I think need clarification, one on page eleven, six D says, and Trey and I visited about this, but we haven't changed it, says it allows for total of fifty game rooms in the county, I think that's more than what y'all wanted, and that fifty's probably just a placeholder, meaning we just stuck a number in there, knowing that you guys were gonna have to decide, also understand that we can't regulate one or two machines here or there, like at an allsops or a convenience store, because there have to be six or more in one place for the county to be able to regulate them under the state statute, so that's why you see in there where there are six or more games, or a game room is defined as having six or more machines, so if there's one at allsops or one at the truck stop, we can't regulate those, uh, and the other thing would be to fill in the dates for the grandfather, because we have to give the grandfather game rooms and dates by which they need to get registered, et cetera, before we can take enforcement action. That's, uh, part of dealing with these game room ordinances, that none of them are clear. For many county you look at, they're difficult.
So the one we have right now in the county, does grandfather till a certain date, if we approve this?
Yeah, yes, and they have to be, because you can't come in and take somebody's livelihood, taking of property is what it'd be called, if you didn't grandfather them in, so yeah, my thought was, um, if, if, if they're operating continuously out in the county right now, let's say we set a date of October thirty-first, and they have to be fully, um, their application has to be fully submitted and approved by January first, and we start the first of the year with the units, as far as I know, there's only one in the county, I don't know of any others, there may be.
Uh, just one.
Do what?
Just one.
Just one, so, and, and I don't know, and I'll ask the sheriff this, I think I know the answer, but you're not, you're not ready to start taking applications today, are you?
No, sir.
You're gonna have to get an application process set up, uh, get an application which is supposed to be attached to this ordinance, and I don't know that if y'all have them, I just didn't have the A, B, and C attachments to it.
I believe.
The application, the application for employees.
Yeah.
Place to put the funds, the application.
Yeah.
Funds, we're gonna have to set up a bank account, I think. So I don't know if the county's ready to take applications yet, but we're gonna get the cart in front of the horse, you guys need to discuss it first, and then we'll get the apparatus set up to process it.
My, my, on the, on the funds, does it have to be set up in a separate bank account, kept separately for, or can you send me the statute that has to do?
There is no guidance, it just says you can charge up to a thousand dollars per application fee, and I think fifty dollars per applicant, per employee, I don't know that it has to be a separate account.
Could go to our regular bank, general fund.
I think so.
But it would have to be a, like, maybe a gaming fund?
A line?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say that it has to be used for law enforcement purposes, I think the revenue just goes to the general revenue of the county.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking.
And then count one, that I would have to create.
Yeah, but there needs to be some way to account for it, when the sheriff brings it in, he needs to receive it for game room X, these are employees of game room X, so that you'll know, everybody will know where it's coming and where it's going.
Okay.
So we can charge, you set up to a thousand dollars per application?
Right, which is in the ordinance.
And then fifty for each employee?
That's what we've put in the ordinance, we're gonna try that, uh, and they have to submit background checks, and we're supposed to, on their employees, so that you don't get a felon as an example, working in a.
Right.
A game room as an employee.
So, all of your blanks are filled in now?
Uh, no, how many, my recommendation is, if you're going to do this, that you, that we say so many game rooms per commissioner precinct, whether that's one, two, three, ten, that's up to y'all, um, that way we don't get sued for excluding game rooms from being in a certain part of the county, 'cause we can't outlaw them completely, either by black letter or tacitly, so, one, two, three, whatever, per commissioner precinct, and I understand these do not apply, we, we've exempted the city, because the city is wanting to, as I understand it, some of the city is wanting to make theirs stricter than ours, which is fine, so these only apply outside of the incorporated city limits.
So we can't say zero precinct?
Right.
You can't put your application.
Nothing wrong with just putting one.
Right.
You can try that, the only we're gonna know is if it gets challenged, they sue us, and then we have to fight it court, but at least we could say, look, we were equal opportunity in every portion of the county, and we only wanted one per precinct, so you can try.
Well, we'd need to be over six, would we not, for enforcement purposes, otherwise we can't, if they have one each.
No, you're talking about one, one game room, not one machine.
Oh, the building itself.
Yeah, 'cause right now we have fifty game rooms.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, if they have under six, we can't regulate them anymore.
Right.
I think we only go with one per precinct. And you, a thousand dollars per application, probably fifty per employee.
Is there a per machine, or that allows?
It's, it's not, it's not allowed by our statute, the cities are doing it.
We can make them stamp it, but we can't collect the fee on it.
So, and, and that's the other issue, we'll need an application or something for, per each machine, so they can come in, put the serial number on it, sheriff, we're gonna have to order some stamps put on there, there's gonna be a process.
Yeah.
Of getting it up and running.
Yeah, I would do that.
Sheriff, do you think you can have the applications and everything ready to go by the end of October, that gets you a month and a half?
Sure.
Where should we change this?
So, uh, I'm thinking of the grandfather, can we go with January one of twenty-six?
That's what I was thinking, go ahead and have everybody start getting their applications in, the ones that are pre-existing, have them start getting them in by October thirty-first to January first, and then any new ones, obviously, that come in after January first of twenty-six fall under the, they're not grandfather, but those are the dates that I wrote in here just, just for planning purposes, um, October thirty-first of twenty-five, January and those blanks are on page fifteen, under section twelve.
Put that in the motion. Okay, here we go. Make the motion that we approve.
Make the motion that we approve the countywide game room ordinance with a $1,000 per game room fee, $50 per employee fee. And October 31st, '25 to, January 1st of '26. To get existing ones, get their application in.
Sixty. You said one per precinct?
Sixty.
Okay. I was reading, Commissioner's Court shall appoint a hearing judge to hear all appeals on here under.
Yeah, at some point, they have the right to due process, so if the sheriff comes in and says, I'm pulling your application, you're denying your application, I'm denying your employee permit for employee X, they, they have to have a due process, right, to appeal. And so the court at some point, and it doesn't have to be done today, if we get an appeal, is going to have to appoint a hearing judge. I prefer that it not be you, because you would also be tasked with hearing those criminal cases as well, if they are operating illegally. So at some point, we'll need to do that, so find somebody.
You just blow the hole in my motion.
Yeah, well, omit that part of your motion, do that part later.
But could that be the district judge?
Yeah, no, because the district judge might have an organized criminal activity case that stems from these, it needs to be an independent, somebody independent, I think, from the, from the entities.
Gotcha. Okay.
The full, the whole, over. Anyway, he made, he made the motion, yeah, I'll second it.
So our motion is still the $1,000 per game room, $50 per employee, one room per precinct.
One room per precinct.
Twenty, 10, 31, 25, and 1, 1, 26, to get grandfather, the one that's grandfathered, to get up today and be, okay. We'll start January. Okay.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? December, did you have a question?
No.
All right, I'll appear. It was clear as night.
Well, I thought we did a pretty good job.
No, it's clear as night.
If you can't sleep tonight, just start reading the ordinance.
I put you right there.
I read it.
Yeah. You don't remember either, do you?
I do remember.
All right, Court Consider Agreement with West Texas Centers. This is their annual agreement for data editorial services and the library. And they always do a good job, so. From September 1st to August 31st of next year.
My motion, we're pretty, we're West Texas here, in the library.
Thank you. I'll appear. I am going to skip the Hermit Golf Agreement, because it's told it needed to be done and it doesn't, it's a five-year agreement, we just did it last year, so it's good. Uh, approval of treasurer's monthly reports for August 25th, and that includes the June, and May, second quarter, second quarter, and then the monthly personnel reports for June, May, June, and July.
Yes, and thank y'all for your patience as we have, as we have worked through the program. Y'all, have y'all looked over them? Do you have any questions regarding, our rates are staying steady? Just had no significant questions.
I didn't see anything. My motion, we're pretty, there's monthly report, August 25th, and personal report.
Thank you.
Do I do?
I'll appear. Approval of county auditors, August 20, 25, monthly financial report, which you provided online.
My motion, we're pretty, county auditor, August 20, 25, monthly financial report.
Like, I'll appear. No certified revenues?
No, there are two non-transfers and two budget amendments. First non-transfer is the district court administrative expense for $2,520 out of court reporter line. And then the other one is district clerk into other equipment, $2,000 out of equipment, purchasing updated computers. And then budget amendment is the court reporter line, education and training, $13,9260. He had, he went to Austin for training last week. And then the sheriff's line, uh, captain to capital for $60,000. This is from some of the certified funds that have already previously certified to purchase computers.
My motion, we're pretty, allow, transfer in the budget amendment.
I'll appear. Approval of county's table?
County's table is $4,410,198.73.
I look big old.
I'll appear. We do have an executive session, our special attorney on any possible rapid payment.